Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder with masks, try to use your microphone as much as possible. Good morning and welcome, Sean. If there's no corrections to the agenda, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second, Gillespie.
Motion seconded. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. We see our claims and reports. We have consent agenda. Is there anything on that that needs attention? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Gillespie.
Second. Motion second, approve the consent agenda items. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Takes us to the opportunity for public comment from the audience. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on any matter containing to the county not on the agenda? Thank you. Sheriff.
I just got this this morning, so I just wanted to bounce it off the commission. It's, Chief Deputy Brown has looked into it. It's called a thermaport. It's an automatic temperature tester that people just walk by. You know, test people for temperature every second. They have them in some of the schools. This is a much smaller version. But right now, security is checking about 300 to 500 people a day at the security desk. And some people take offense to us putting that thermometer. You're just kind of getting in people's personal space. This would eliminate that. They would just walk through it as they walk through the security thing. They're $2,700, and I have forwarded it on to the CARES Act people to see if that would cover it. Either way, I think it would be a good purchase for the county, for the security desk. So just, I printed off copies of it if you guys want to see it, but actually, I just want to make you aware of it today. And it's not on the agenda, so.
Does it stand on the ground or does it go?
It's got a stand. It would stand at the security desk, right on the desk. People just walk by it. As they walk by it, checks their temperature and it can reset every second.
Whoever's at the desk, if somebody didn't get stand or was, if it didn't get close enough to them, or how will they signal?
If it didn't get a signal, we'll just have to have them walk back through it, just like we do with the metal detector, so.
Okay, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff. Just later, let me talk to you about that. All right. Harold, good morning.
Morning. I'll briefly address our burn ban which we have in place, and we're looking at removing as soon as possible. However, after this week, it's going to get dry again. And when I've visited with all the fire chiefs, they're almost suggesting that we keep it on for a little while yet. And if it's okay with you, I'll bring it forward as an agenda item next Thursday for the meeting, and we'll deal with it more there. It's tough to tell people not to burn when there's snow on the ground. So I did find out in Iowa, they only enforce theirs when the weather service issues a red flag warning. So maybe it's something we need to consider down the road if we do this again in time. So we'll visit more about it next week as an agenda item.
Very good. Thanks, Harold.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? Anyone else in the audience? I'm moving to the commission. Anybody from the commission like to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'll comment what Harold just talked about. I had a person from Lincoln Township call me and wanted to light a tree pile on fire. And I said, well, there is a burn van in place. And I said, if you can put everything in a 55-gallon barrel and put a lid on it or a screen, you're fine. But otherwise, maybe better hold off. So anyway.
I'll comment on that, too. Tree piles are the worst because it takes forever for them to go down. The wind can change and come up, and you've got to hold off on that.
Yeah, he, I think he wanted my permission or something. And I said, well, if it gets out of control, then you'll be dealing with a deputy, of course. So, you know, so. Yeah, so thank, thank you. That's all I had.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to share a friendly email that we have received from Craig Lloyd, who is president of Lloyd Properties, you know, came down to vote. And he wrote the following, "Jim, we went to Canton to vote from the guard to the person who took our vote and gave us the vote sheet. Pat and I were so impressed with how pleasant everyone was and how kind they were to give us directions. Congratulations to your great team. I understand why you're so proud of your county. Then we went to Lori's Latte for coffee and some of their fine pastries that were unbelievable. Not good for our waistline, but so worth it. Thank you again for your recommendation to come down and vote early. You have a fine team. You have a fine county." Craig Lloyd.
Very good. Anyone else on the board? Hearing none, let's move forward. We have under our regular business, well, that's the schedule, so we're going to move past.
Mr. Chairman, before you go, I'm just going to tell you, I have to leave early. We're going to be at the WIN Conference up in Sioux Falls, talking about housing and workforce housing. So I have to say goodbye about 10:30.
Oh, I'm hopeful we're able to get through everything by then.
Okay.
So Sean, number two, is that, it's not scheduled, so we can go ahead and have that first reading?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you take us through that, please?
It's the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County amending Article 3, Section 3.03 permitted special uses and Section 3.04 conditional uses of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota.
Morning, Toby.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. So this morning, we have before you the first reading of an amendment to the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County. Currently, a Class C constipated animal feeding operation is a permitted special use, which essentially means if they meet the standards of the ordinance, staff issues a building permit. So there is no public notification, public hearing, or further conditions attached to the application. The proposed amendment before you would change Class C constipated animal feeding operations to a conditional use, much like Class As and Bs. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this and unanimously, seven to zero, recommended this change of the ordinance. This is the first reading. The second reading, I believe, is scheduled for the second meeting in November, if I'm correct. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Any questions for Toby or staff? I guess it's a quiet day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim? Go on.
Mr. Brown has my presentation.
Very good.
Sure.
Good morning. I'm Jim Feeney with Southeastern Council of Government. And I have a presentation today quickly on the Metropolitan Organizations Long-Range Transportation Plan. This is a federally mandated plan. We do this every five years. It's, we do annual plans with the Transportation Improvement Program, but another federal requirement for these metropolitan areas over 50,000. And you can see the area here, Hartford, Crooks, Brandon, Harrisburg, T, as well as the city of Sioux Falls and portions of Lincoln and Manyah County. This is a plan, obviously a long-range plan, complementing the city and county's plans. And again, looking at, in addition to roadways, some multimodal approach. So we're looking at aviation, transit, freight, bicycle and pedestrian issues also. Again, just listing the cities and counties there. We work with the Federal Highway Administration, with our office out of Pierre, as well as out to DOT. And we have representatives on our various committees from freight, rail, aviation. And we've reached out to other stakeholders in Ag and the general public also. Again, with the federal plan, there's federal requirements. These are some of the things through the various acts that are, must be addressed in this, these guiding planning principles. Big item was public engagement. Last year, 2019, we did a market research study. We'll be spending a little time on that. We've had a website, the Go Sioux Falls 2045, on that with some podcasts. We started with an open house downtown Sioux Falls Public Library in January. We had other community engagement events planned, and then along came COVID, and those were canceled. We have worked with a study advisory team that is met monthly. And we've done a few things, again, through the website for some other engagement, public engagement, but really depended on that 2019 study. It was pretty extensive. There were stakeholders interviews, six focus groups, statistically valid survey of residents. And just quickly here, that's the distribution of the over 1,000 responses to that survey from the residents. And it was also, you know, gender and age and so forth, so very well done. Also, did a survey of 310 employers, and they collectively employ more than 15,000 people. Surveyed 200 traditionally underserved people. And then added to that, the same firm that did this research study, ETC, they're out of the state of Kansas, in the Kansas City area. They had previously, in the fall of 2018, done a survey of transit users for the Sioux Falls Transit System, so. And the other thing is, ETC Institute had done this for the MPO for, this is the fifth time, so over 20 years of results. That's the good news, the bad news, the overall trend is that the perception from the residents that the system's in excellent or good shape has decreased from 66% in 1999 to 37% in 2019. So that's the trend as far as the rating of the system. The responses from residents, employers and underserved, not too surprising, but on everybody's list was a priority of improving the east-west roads in Sioux Falls, improving the north-south roads, proving the timing of lights. Residents then cited both new interchanges, as well as improving existing interchanges on the interstates. Employers added to that, one of their priorities, improving the roads in rural areas that link into Sioux Falls. And the underserved addressed the public transportation and also the transportation, improving that service for the people with disabilities, as well as senior citizens. We did ask the question of how residents think that current level of spending, whether it should be, is it the same, is it just right, should it be increased? And nearly 70% thought it should be somewhat greater or much greater. Another question on there that I asked for was, how much do you think you contribute to transportation? And that ranged quite extensively, because I don't think people have a good idea how much they pay as far as fuel tax, federal, their state. If there's a part of their property taxes are being spent for transit or transportation, is not real transparent. So I believe that is something that we need to address also, is letting people know that. Briefly, another aspect of this is the traffic demand model. This is a tool that's used by cities and counties. It was part of the efforts with your transportation study, the countywide one last year. That model's been updated. This is needed to show where the growth is going to be as we look at a long-range plan, a 25-year planning horizon. Need to have some idea where that growth is. So again, looking at those comprehensive plans from the various cities and counties and seeing how much growth and where it might be. Looking at population, households and employment, all those, looking at the next 25 years. All those are projected to grow more than 50%. And the population, as you can see, just under 250,000 in 2018, projected to be almost 380,000 in 2045. So then, that's a key use for this study. And then, future, if other communities, counties are doing studies specific to a corridor or intersection or something, they will utilize that this model to help them size the improvements that need to be done based on the useful life of that facility. And just kind of a wiring diagram here showing the level of detail it gets down to. These are daily counts and how that model generates that information. So means something to a traffic engineer. Another aspect on the federal requirements, and this is a new one, is on system performance. And starting, this was not included in the 2040 plan, but since that time, this requirement's come on board. And the MPO committees have been adopting targets in various areas. There are safety ones. We're looking at facilities. We're looking at fatalities, injuries and rates, pavement and bridge condition, as well as system performance that's having to do with reliability of the system and wait times and so forth. The MPOs have options nationally to adopt their own or adopt state ones, which our committees have done, is have voted to support state DOT's targets. And just very quickly, you know, facility on fatalities. If you're looking at statewide ones versus MPOs, you know, the target for the state is 120 fatalities, and there's a dozen in the MPO area. You know, are we contributing? Are we helping or not? It's just something that we provided for reference only. The rate you're getting into is something that's more specific to the MPO, and we do look at that. But again, the section in the report is reflective of the state goals in these areas. Additionally, recently, we added some transit ones and again, have adopted the state targets there. So there's a section in the long-range plan that will just recap what those targets have been. The safety ones that we do annually, the other ones have been adopted for a four- or five-year period. Then we get down to the project priorities. Back to those planning features, put some criteria on those, took the projects from the previous plan and looked at the input from the communities, what they had on their capital improvement plans or five-year plans. Again, Lincoln County with its master transportation plan had more to bring to the table as far as planned projects. Throughout the metropolitan planning area, we came up with 169 projects that were prioritized through this process. And that is the guts of this 2045 plan. And again, these are on the categories having to do with safety, security, system preservation, efficiency of the system. Those were some of those things. And then, again, put on metrics on all of those. And we were working with engineering firm, Kimley-Horn and IDG. It was a subcontractor. They have an office in Sioux Falls, and they applied metrics to all those, looking at accident rates and, again, that demand model on the congestion. So this comes through, looking at those 169 projects and looked at the funding as it's available now. I believe we projected that the revenues were going to grow at 1.5%. And the cost for these projects for looking at inflation is at 2%, so that's a losing battle on that aspect. And then, looked at what was needed for operation and maintenance. And that, the revenues less that is what is available for the capital funding. And when you go through that, about, the region is about 330 million short of doing everything that needs to be done. I guess I do like to come back to this and say the other part of this is that, with the funding available, capital improvements of over $1 billion is anticipated in the next 25 years. So there will be obviously lots of improvements to the system. But again, not everything can be done. You'll notice that the number for Lincoln County is one of the, is the largest as far as the shortfall for those improvements. I don't think that's too big of a surprise. Working with Toby and Terry, brought forward all those various projects that were on your master transportation plan. And obviously, there's other issues with jurisdictional questions and how those transfers and so on and so forth. But that is a big number for Lincoln County as far as that shortfall. But I think people in this room know all the reasons for that. So some other things that are addressed in this long-range plan, emerging technologies. Again, working with Federal Highway and the MPO, we do like our acronyms. So CASE is one section. This has to do with the connected, automated, shared and electric vehicles. Those emerging technologies and the Internet of Things. So there's a section addressing those. We also have sections looking at the highway, freight, aviation, transit, pedestrian and bicycle. Alternative funding opportunities, looked at other jurisdictions as, no recommendations, but just, again, a general recap of some things that might be looked at for additional funding. And again, this process has been going on for a little over a year. The draft plan in September, our committee's had an informational presentation from Kimley-Horn on those. That document is on our website here shortly, like tomorrow, and maybe sooner. We'll have the final draft posted. There'll be another public hearing at our November 4th, excuse me, our November 5th Technical Advisory Committee. That's being held via Zoom. And comments can be received up through the 4th of November as we look forward to moving through this and finalizing the 2045 Long-Range Transportation Plan. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim concerning this presentation? Do you have a breakdown, Jim, like specifically Lincoln County's projects that need improvement? Cost per segment of this, that and the other aspect?
Mr. Chairman, yes. In the report itself.
It's broken down that way.
There's a table that has the, you know, specific projects and the costs. And the costs are in five-year increments in different bands, and they are, you know, they're inflated looking at those. So that is part of the plan.
Very good.
Jim, would you go back to the amount of money that was required by, I think Lincoln County had a shortfall of $169 million? You know, would you look at Manyah County with $7 million, the city of Sioux Falls with 70? Was there an actual why Lincoln County chose to maintain their grid and all of the roads and bridges? Why were $170 million shy on that?
Toby, this is where you said you were going to step.
Is it, Jim, just because of the sheer amount of growth that that area is going to see in the next?
And again, you just went through the process with that master transportation plan, looked at issues within the county and certainly within that universe of projects. I know there's certain issues having to do with jurisdictional, whether those, some of those road segments will be going from the county to a city or from the township to the county. So that has been a challenge.
Yeah. I think where the number comes from is directly from the recently adopted Lincoln County Master Transportation Plan. So it's just to carry over those improvements. We haven't gone through a prioritization of those or anything like that, but it is what it is at this point in time. So as Jim said.
That's the one that called for us to assume, I don't know, how many miles of township roads and, you know, other kinds of main arteries into the city for transportation, for work, you know, directing, so.
It's a comprehensive look at all the roads that don't meet the classifications that they need to meet for the future, so.
That's a total universe of the projects, so.
Any other questions? Want to thank you, Jim, for the presentation and appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got about eight minutes. Sheriff? Perfect. Thank you.
Hope it doesn't take eight minutes here.
Okay.
What I'd like the commission to consider is an exception to policy. I have four, actually five officers that are, three of them are over 180 hours of vacation leave built up. And this, the reason for this is the backfilling the leave for COVID. We've got two officers deployed on military leave. So not giving these guys much of an opportunity to take their vacation. And now the predicament we're in is after December 31st, that has to go back to 80 hours. I'd like the commission to consider paying those hours down to, or up to 60 or 80 hours to alleviate them to have to take all this leave at the end of the year. Because the side effect of that is, I'm going to have to backfill those hours with overtime shifts. So this is kind of a wash. CARES won't pay for hours not worked. So this would be at the county expense. It's in the budget to pay either way. If they take the leave, it's in the budget that we can backfill the shifts. Or they've offered to do the buy-down. I guess it'd be a lack of a better term. But I would like the commission to consider paying these guys for their leave and keep them at work. And, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel. The two deployed will be back early next year. We also have two that'll be hitting the field from field training in the next week or two. So the relief is in, on the way, but it's just, this would really provide them maybe a little thanks for not taking leave this summer and help cover the shifts.
So you want to pay down the 60 hours?
Yeah, 60 hours is the number I came up with, and then that would encourage them to use a little bit to avoid a little burnout issues as well.
Steve, we've had this challenge in front of us before, too. I mean, there's been a, maybe not the same identical thing, but it's just, we've had that issue where, you know, it's just, these things happen, so.
Right.
Is this going to open it up for other people in the courthouse that are in the same maybe situation? Or is it just maybe standalone in the SO? Or, I don't know, I just.
I haven't talked to any other department heads if they're in the same situation.
Yeah.
I mean, in all fairness, because of COVID, people just had to step up, and they did. I just hate to penalize them. I just hate to penalize them where they would either lose leave or penalize having all these people have to work. Because obviously we can't not have somebody out, whether it's four o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, it kind of follows with 911. I mean, 365 seven days a week. So I mean, it is eight hours a day, Monday through Friday. So I, I understand, so.
Yep.
Steve, would the pay down be, would that be covered by the CARES Act at all?
No, it has to be, it has to be hours worked.
Okay.
So I did have HR get some numbers to me and, and this would, I'm just doing this. She put together getting them down to 80 hours, which is not what I'm asking. I'm just not allowing anyone to go below 80 hours. But if we paid it all out, there's one with 180 hours, which is 100 hours. So just doing the math in my head here, 240, 280 hours would be roughly $13,984. But that's paying them completely down to 80 hours and that's not what I'm asking. So I'd knock about 40% off that. And it's in my budget. It's not, it's in my payroll budget. It wouldn't cause, either way, if I have to pay the overtime or if we paid this down, either way, it would, it's not an issue. I just, it would just put us in a bind to, especially in investigations. If, if that officer had to take 100 hours off before December 31st, they're already drowning.
Any other questions? You've heard the request. Is there any action to be taken?
I, I don't have any problem with it, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to grant the sheriff's request to buy down these five officers down to six hours, 60 hours. I think that's a little over $8,000 perhaps, which is in his budget. And I think that given the nature of the pandemic, given the nature that some of those are servicing in, in our nation's military, I think it's certainly justified.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Jim, just let me ask a question. He's requesting that we offer to pay down the uniformed officers, their bank up to 60 hours. So I think, is that your motion? I was not understanding what your motion was.
Yes.
I would second that if that's the motion.
That's the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions on the motion? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
I'm voting no. Thank you, Sheriff. Then you want to tether for a drone?
Yes, and I'll let Harold explain that. Good morning again. As you may have realized, we've used this drone quite a bit in various situations. And there's times when we have to bring it down to change batteries and we maybe lose what we're looking for. It happened up by Harrisburg last week when we were in that incident. And we have the, a chance through the sheriff's budget with some money he has to purchase this tether, which allows you to bring the drone up 150 feet, still control it from the ground, rotate it. And with our Zoom camera, it's amazing what you can see from a long distance. Example being, I took it home on weekend to practice with it, sat in front of my house, took it out almost a half a mile west and counted the ribs on a culvert from 100 feet in the air. You can zoom in that far. We used it after the incident up by Harrisburg to do some evidence, evidence collection and pictures of that. So with this tether, you can run the drone indefinitely. We can hook it to the little generator we have to charge our batteries. And you could run it all day should you choose to. If we had to monitor a situation where somebody's barricaded or held up, we could do that from a distance and never have to take it down. So it's, we have the opportunity. Sheriff Swenson has the money in his budget to purchase it. We thought it'd be a good time to do it, so.
You've heard the request.
Total on it is 8829, $8,829.
Okay. You've heard a request to purchase this tether, which is in their budget, you said, Sheriff?
Yes.
Clarification? Is there any comments? But otherwise, I'm asking for a motion to approve.
So I'm a Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the purchase of the tether for the drone. Any questions on it?
Who was second on that?
Commissioner Aaronz.
Thank you.
Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you. Right on time.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Being at 9:05, it is the time for the second public hearing for an ordinance Lincoln County amending Article 12, Section 12.09. Sean, you want to lead us into it and Toby?
Yeah, this is the second public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County amending Article 12, Section 12.09F, concentrated animal feeding operations, minimum separation distances of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota.
Good morning again. In May of this year, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to amend Section 1209 of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County, specifically as separation distances for concentrated animal feeding operations in Lincoln County. Those amendments were brought forward to you. You tabled those. In the meantime, Commissioner Gillespie, myself, met with some citizens of the county and came up with some amendments to the planning commission's recommended amendments. Commissioner Gillespie presented those to the board in the first meeting in October. Today, we've set the public hearing about to consider adoption of the amended amendments to the planning commission's recommendation. I'll walk through those amendments with you at this time. So again, this is Section 1209F of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance. The first item in the paragraph would be just some minor word modifications to change from separation distances to setbacks, facility to concentrate animal feeding operation to be more explicit. On the bottom though, is, is a change currently for setback measurements. We measure from the outermost point of the feed lot to the structure or use in the county, which is a dwelling or that. This amendment would change that from property line to property line. So it gives us a little bit more distinct setback measurement. Many times we're dealing with houses that have been constructed. Our aerials are only good for two years. So a lot of times we don't have updated aerials to show us exactly where the setbacks should be measured from. So this would provide, provide some clarification. With that, you're typically though, gonna increase the setback just inadvertently because you're going from property line to property line, probably 100, 150 feet, sometimes greater than that. The next paragraph, again, is, is a wordsmithing, just changing separation distances to setback. And then as far as setback chart, it looks like there's a lot of red there. But a lot of it, we were just adding if it was, if the, if the current setback was by miles, we just added feet to it or vice versa. The only change to setbacks would be an additional setback. And this goes back to the county before 2012. We had a setback for operation to operation. That would bring a form of that back. At that time, it was limited to just swine, but this current amendment would just be universal for all species. So that would be an additional setback from existing operations. And then again, as the planning commission recommended, we'd be removing the odor footprint percentage requirement. But we would be adding some language. And we've, and, and we've talked about this as boards, as planning commissions over the years, that it would be nice to have some standard conditions that we would apply to concentrated animal feeding operations. Again, these, these are not specifically standards, but they would be conditions that would be recommended through the approval process. Primarily that we would, one, maintain appropriate crust or cover on any earth and basin. Two, provide a notice to neighbors before manure hauling application. Three, managing orders through the use of covers, curtains or biofilters. And four, utilizing the South Dakota odor footprint tool for odor prediction. A lot of the concerns that the public has with the odor footprint is, is that we currently use it as a sighting method. So once the application's gone through the approval process, staff doesn't have a means or mechanism to follow up to see if they're within compliance or within range of it. The ordinance, the ordinance strictly allows us as a sighting tool. By having this as a condition, we can work with South Dakota State University as, on a continuous basis, just monitor to see where we're at with different types of odor realizations. Then the last part of this would be is, is that to add some language that upon a written complaint that would be filed with our office, we would set a time with the planning commission for a public hearing to see if there's any resolution that can become of the complaint. Currently, our office does handle complaints with concentrated animal feeding operations, but our office is limited to only enforcing the conditions that are applied to the application. So many times the complaints that we receive are based on specifically odor or, or some other types of mechanism like that. But as, as approved with the permit, there is no really standard for us to, to continue to monitor, work with the, with the property owners. This would be a mechanism where we can get everybody in the same room. We could have good dialogue, have good discussion and see if there's ways we can mediate or, or seek resolution of those types of issues. So that is the amended, amended recommendation of the planning commission. This is the second reading. It's also a public hearing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Thank you, Toby. Is there any questions for Toby and the staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Given it is a public hearing, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience that's in favor of the changes to come up and address the board first? Thank you, name and address.
My name is Anthony James Ventura, 47763, 292nd Street, Hutton, South Dakota, 57034. How are you commissioners today?
Good morning.
Cindy Thomas was not able to attend because of COVID. I'd like to read her speech and then I'll read mine right afterward. They're short and quick. Thank you. This is Cindy's. Hello commissioners, I'm not able to attend the hearing today due to COVID. I believe the draft set forth today by planning and zoning and changes to 1209F goes along with way in protecting the citizens and producers of Lincoln County. This draft sets forth protection of properties as well as protection of operators with confinement and other livestock producers. It affords additional conditions and complaint process for citizens if problems arise. I encourage that you pass this draft with all changes to ordinance 1209F. Now we're on to mine. It's short and quick for once. Currently, one of the biggest contentions at a CAFO hearing is the setback measurement goes to the house instead of the property line, placing trespass zoning into play. This draft is a great compromise to everyone to protect property rights by making setbacks from property line of confinement to property line structure. Waivers are still in place and can be attained when setbacks are less than the ordinance that 1209 provides. Also, an additional, additional conditions along with other complaint process protects not only farmsteads but only prop, and property owners, but also confinement operations. A vote to accept this draft moves Lincoln County in the right direction for the health and safety of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the proposed changes?
I'm Dale Pearson. I live at 29576, 477th Avenue. I just put up a new house there at that location, lived there six months. And they're constructing a hog unit right on the south side of my house, 1,300 and some feet away. I guess I wasn't too happy about that. And I would like to see that lengthened out. So a new homeowner wouldn't have to be put in this position again. Because my new home was, you know, supposed to be worth this much, but now it's worth this much. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody, I'll turn it to the opposing. Is there anybody in opposition of the changes that would like to get up and address the board?
Ann Hoffman, 47331, 273rd Street. These ordinances were in 2009, 2010. One, we just say we don't want livestock in Lincoln County. And cut the bull crap, keep changing ordinances. You're talking guys that's probably got a million, $2 million operations or planning for something. And we keep changing this stuff. One of them notifying your neighbors if you're going to spread manure. Couple of weeks ago, I think I counted up 22. What do you, if you consider neighbors within a mile of you? I have 22 people that have moved, have moved in on me. I've been there since 45. This feed yard has been there since 45. That's just where I load at. Now we haul down the road and there's places where I'd probably have to notify another 10 or 15 people. Just pass an ordinance and tell me I can operate. Same with everybody else. Just, just make an ordinance that we don't want livestock, but let's get this over with, guys. Because I hate to be nickel and dime. And this is what this is. You have rules and regulations because you're trying to avoid to have, stopping somebody. I know my time's numbered. I'm a half mile from Harrisburg. So far, we've been getting along pretty good. But this is a bunch of crap. 1,320 feet versus 1,300 feet. I'm sorry. This is splitting hairs. Lincoln County's got better things to do than this, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Helen. Anyone else in, in opposition? With that, I'll turn it back to the board. Is there any questions for staff again or anything else for clarification? Are we ready to take any action today? Commissioner Gillespie?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll speak. Don, thank you for those comments. This, you know, we, we've been working on, you know, the ad hoc thing, worked on it last year for six months. And we tried to come up with situations that would be better for everybody. The biggest problem that I see after almost 12 years on the commission is neighbors don't talk to neighbors anymore. And that's where the rub comes in. And I guess it's just the way the, the thing has went. But most of these people aren't against livestock production. They just would like to at least know what's going on, you know? So this, as, as Toby suggested, this just adds, you know, setbacks, property line to, to property line. And it adds maybe 100 feet or 150 feet or maybe up to 400 feet. You know, we originally had Class C swine up to 1980. And I, I always thought that a Class D and a Class C should be a difference. Because it's twice as many head. But I, I guess we're going to leave it at 1,320, but just adjust the setbacks on the property lines. So I don't think it's gonna, anything is gonna take it off the rails here.
Dave, what's, Dave, what's the purpose behind the odor, the notice on the hauling? Because I, I guess that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if you're gonna spread manure, you're gonna know it because it's gonna stink. I mean, what's the recourse if they don't give the notice? I, I don't understand. I get a notice, what am I supposed to do with it? If I don't want them to do it?
I think if you go to the bottom paragraph, if there's a complaint filed, then, then they can call planning and zoning and, and file a complaint, a written complaint. I think, are we leading to that maybe possibly or?
I don't know. I, I'm, I'm in favor of all of this except that one condition, I guess, because I.
I look at that as, as just being neighborly so that they're not caught unaware to know that they're being prepared for distribution and that there could be an odor that's gonna last for a day or two or something like that so that they're not just waking up one morning. And I think it's a, I think it's a courtesy situation just to be, inform your neighbors about what your intent is. I don't think it denies them anything. I don't think it's taking away their ability to do it. It's just a notification. That's, that's my interpretation.
Commissioner Aaronz, you have anything to share?
Tiffany, I don't know if that answered the question or not, but I guess, you know, a phone call or maybe would be an order, a simple phone call. You know, I, I think I've had people where they've knifed up stuff, knifed down liquid manure and it, it might be around for a week, you know, depending on the temperature and humidity. But everything is knifed in, so it's supposed to be anyway. So I guess the neighbors. is knifed in, so it's supposed to be anyway. So I guess the neighbors, if they can put up with that, I guess that would be, you know, I think if they get a notice, that would be at least a neighborly thing to do. So, yeah. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we go and move forward with these adoption of this, and that would be my motion.
I have a motion to accept the what was presented today into our ordinances. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. Don, I understand the frustration that you have living where you do, but growth is not going to stop, and I commend you for having a homestead there since 1940 and being a good neighbor and all the things that you've done. I know that a lot of kids have benefited from that soccer field that you provided for them, which you wouldn't have had to do. However, having said that, growth continues, it can use to grow. You unfortunately are right in the bull's eye of that one. I look at this thing as being an adjustment because I thought a lot about that. When you measure from home to home, you're denying that home, that individual that has the property from their house to their property line just gets thrown away. I think that a person is paying taxes from property line to property line on their side so that this is a meaningful compromise, and I think it's a good one. And I commend the Ad Ha Committee and I commend Tony for his diligence and hard work over these many weeks that you have worked on this. If you're a fine example of what citizens can do to change something, I commend you on that. But I second Commissioner Gillespie's motion.
Motion is second. Now for discussion. Anybody have any questions for staff or anybody?
Tony, I want to thank you for the work you've done, Commissioner Gillespie as well. I can't support this. I appreciate what you're trying to do here, but I do have concerns about the impact this has on producers and the production industry. We're in a very difficult time right now for producers in this country and in this state. I don't want to make it more difficult on them. Lincoln County still has, even with the tremendous amount of growth that we have, we have decades of opportunities for people to continue farming and continue production in this county yet. There's a rural urban divide in this county, geographically speaking, and that's a fine line that we have to walk. And I appreciate what Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Gillespie are attempting to do here with trying to walk that line. I just have a disagreement specifically with some of the setbacks between the CAFOs. I think they're a little too aggressive, a little too much for my taste. And so, but I do like other parts of this. But unfortunately, I can't support it because of that, but I do appreciate the hard work you've put into this and the intent behind it.
Commissioner Landin?
Well, and I don't necessarily concur with Commissioner Aaron's reasons for not supporting it, but I'm in the same boat. I like the majority of this, but I think when people move out into the country, they have to expect some of the things that come along with that. And if somebody needs to, you know, spread manure, haul manure, and they've got, I don't know how many neighbors Don has around him that he would have to notify, but that's just going to keep increasing. And I do think it puts too much of an onus on the producers to have to notify somebody. And I don't see any mechanism in here that's going to that provides for what to do if, you know, does he have to wait to spread the manure? Somebody files a complaint, then what? The manure is already spread. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me for somebody to come in here and then figure out what the resolution is after it's already happened. So for that reason and that reason only, I'm going to be a no on it.
Thank you. My question is for, I think, maybe Tony or Toby. What I see as a problem in our county is that we're changing very quickly and we're trying to adjust. But what we keep talking about is the new operations, but what we're going to end up doing is punishing these operations that have been here for generations as well. And I've spoken with you, Tony, about that, and I've tried to express my wishes with Toby as well, that I can support that we've become very stringent on new operations showing up where they weren't before. But I'm very disappointed that we're punishing operations that did not ask for residences to come up next to them, Mr. Huffmans and the other individuals that have operations. So for that reason, I cannot support this at this time. I have a lot of respect for, you know, someone that purchased and builds a home and not wanting to have something come around them and have the notification process to be there for that. But if they've moved out to an operation that's, you know, now if we change the rules, and we have constantly changed the rules, now that they're impacted by a setback that they didn't ask for, they didn't ask for that neighbor to come around. So until we have a stance in which existing operations get some additional leeway to operate, not just for the next five years, there may be generations to come. We don't know whose kids will want to come back to the farm because of, but because of a neighbor that sells an eligibility, and now they're going to get have ramifications because of that, and we don't recognize that. And until we do, I cannot support it. So Toby, any comments on anything else?
So a couple of quick points is, so the conditions that were talked about, those would be on new operations. That would potentially be a condition of a conditional use permit. The second item that would be the setback that we're changing, that can be waived by the producers and by the owners. So it is a waivable setback as well. So with that, any other questions you have for me?
Just for clarification though, but if they're going to change the size of their operation from A to B or C, they're going to have to reapply?
They'd have, yes, and change in operations you get, but they could waive that setback.
Yeah, but again, it still is not clear in there, the ability to change and grow for those operations. So because even if a building gets replaced, I believe it has a change of operations. They may even be trying to just replace a type of facility, and it doesn't give them the any leniency because of an existing operation, does it?
Well, the only change would be is if they increase the numbers on the site. So that would be the only one that would require an additional permit. But again, that setback could be waived, much like all the setbacks can be waived. And again, we wouldn't require existing operations to notify neighbors and those types of things. That's only on new applications that would be coming down the pipe.
It doesn't say that, though.
It's not clear in there.
Well, it says that it's conditions that would be applied to the conditional use permit.
Any other questions for Toby?
I don't have a question for Toby, Mr. Chairman, but I'm not deep in the weeds on the details for new operations. But I go back to the idea that I don't think it's onerous and necessarily detrimental to producers if you go from property line to property line. I look at that as being a fair compromise. When you go from house to the facility, it always seems to me that that amount of property that exists between a person's home and their property line isn't given any consideration. That's just thrown away. That's not there. But it isn't. That's part of his home. That's part of his property. So why not make this from property line to the facility? It seems to me to be a very good and capable compromise. I don't think it's going to curtail further growth of livestock industry. I don't think it's being anything. I just think it adds clarification to the countryside that needs this. And for those people that reside there, for those people that have made their home there, that's one thing. I understand. I'm not opposed to livestock production, goodness sakes. I understand this. I've driven up and down this county for a long time, and I look at all the new facilities that are coming in because I think we have a tremendous number of new CAFOs. So to say that this is going to curtail that, I don't agree. I just think it's a good, solid piece of change that will add to our overall ordinances.
Commissioner Schmidt, I agree with you with regard to how to measure between different CAFOs. I told Tony this over the phone, told Commissioner Gillespie this. I would support that method of measurement to go from property line to property line. The problem I have is with the amount of distance between those property lines. You know, that's where I have a problem with this policy. But I agree with you. I think there probably is a good 60% to 70% of things that you probably have the votes for that we can agree upon. And that's what we should work on, get consensus on those items, pass them, put them into the county ordinance. But with some of these other things, I think that's where you've got some disagreement.
Anything else? Otherwise, I am going to ask, call a question and see what happens. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No. I do believe that by going property to property line and with the setbacks, it will, in essence, eliminate the ability of operators to start. I would like to see a map, Toby, presented with areas, we've done this in the past, where operations could exist if they didn't receive a variance or not a variance, but a waiver where operations might be able to reside from property to property line. But now, we have an opportunity to redirect to staff. How would you like them to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Toby work with and find those areas that Commissioner Aaron's and myself have talked about so that we can address these things and not let this just drop and die. So I would redirect that back to the Planning Commission to come up, evaluate what we found in opposition or what you found in opposition, and try to address those so that we could get a consensus of all five of us to agree.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to see a map of the locations where producers could locate. I think that'd be very helpful to see both for the public but as well as for producers. So I'd like to see that. I kind of liken this to the wind energy debate where you could put rules in place, but then the effect of the rules is to essentially eliminate any possibility that a wind tower could actually be sighted. So before we start putting those rules into place for producers, I think it's important that we see the what effect that would have.
All right, moving on. We've got a 10:05 and a 10:15. Opening is Terry here.
Terry's out there.
Hey, Terry. Good morning.
I'm looking for approval to purchase equipment for 21 out of 21's budget. Got three quotes. You should have that information in your shared drive.
Any questions on it? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve the-
The first one is, is going to be a Ram for $40,468. Second one is Chevy, $43,470. And then third one is $44,799. I would like to get the Chevrolet because that has the Allison transmission, 10-speed transmission with it, since we're going to be pulling with this thing. I know it's a little more money. Just as a reference, I did get state bid prices as well, and these quotes that I got are all less than state bid price as well, so.
You want to bring them back up again?
Which one you want?
The Chevy, I guess. I'll take a look at that.
How much more is that, Terry?
It's for the Ram, it's going to be about $3,000. The Ram has a 6-speed automatic transmission, and it's just, it's a standard transmission. You know, since we're going to be pulling skid loaders, equipment on trailer with it, we're thinking maybe it'd be better to have the Allison. The Allison automatic is a pretty reliable transmission.
Replacing one transmission will be more than the difference between the two.
Yes.
Yeah. Terry, this is coming in, the Chevy's coming in the lowest, correct?
The Ram is the lowest at $40,400.
Okay.
What are your wishes, board? You authorize, he's requesting the Chevy. Is there a motion of that effect or alternative motion?
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
A motion to authorize the purchase of the Chevy for $43,470. Is that correct, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on that? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, John. Sorry, I should have got you before you had to pause there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have two things on the agenda today. First is the, after this result of the last meeting, we had a discussion that it would be good to get a space need study to know exactly what the people in the old courthouse would like to see in their space to make it more efficient for them. So Architectural Incorporated has put together a proposal to do just that, to meet with all parties and everything, and that is for, well, $6,500. It should be in your shared drive, which is right in the ballpark of what we were talking about last week. So what I would need is approval to move forward with accepting the proposal and having the chair sign it.
Any questions on that? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to authorize the chairman's signature.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you, John.
So the next thing is, I have been working with Associated Consulting Engineering on the same project for the old building. And part of that discussion is I had some very interesting conversations about issues with this current building that I've struggled with as a result of some things that might not have been quite done right originally, but also per modifications that we've made to the building over the last 12 years. And originally, I was going to roll all this together into the old courthouse project, but it wasn't put in there. And I did have a substantial amount of money put aside for budget for most of these issues for next year. And that money, I believe, will, after talking to these gentlemen, I believe that will cover the cost of this. So this is basically to let them get moving forward to develop the engineering for correcting some of these issues. Again, those are listed in your shared drive, but an example of that would be is like the stairwell going out for employee entrance and egress. Over here has never been air conditioned, so all summer long, that stairwell probably feels like, well, it actually is 85 degrees most of the summer. So that would be changed. And there's just issues like that. There's fixing issues of where we've subdivided rooms to gain office space, and now we don't have real efficient ways of cooling and heating, and it would resolve a lot of those issues. I guess the two biggest issues, I guess I'd even touch on, is the communications closet, which is right across the hall here. Because of our growth and added servers and whatnot, that room is very hot, and it's not good for equipment. So Jake and I have talked at length about the need to cool it, so that would be resolved in this. And also the same thing with down in Dispatch 911, their communications closet, server room, and all that is also hot, and we would resolve that in. And the goal of that is also to make it to where if we have issues with the main HVAC system or the air conditioning system in the summertime, that I can keep Dispatch cool. So since they're here 24/7, and there's kind of a standalone that kind of gives me a little bit of freedom to get them on their own system.
So that's your recommendation, John, is for this mechanical, electrical hourly, not to exceed $10,000?
Correct.
You've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to that effect?
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Landin, thank you.
And just to make sure then that authorizes the chair to sign that agreement also.
Any questions, Sean? Any questions, board? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thank you again, John.
Did they put any timeline, John, on when they would? Are they going to begin immediately on this thing and- Are they going to begin immediately on this thing and come back to us with some kind of date, like when we'll have this study ready and all this other stuff?
Yes, I believe there is a timeline. I think they're going to try to get moving on it here within the next 30 days of meeting with court system and all that.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah.
Metamonitor, you'd like to talk to us about some holiday hours and some budget supplements, et cetera? Good morning.
Good morning. The state sent out an email stating that they will be closed on the day after Thanksgiving, which we already have closed, but they will also be closed on the 24th of December. Do we want to follow?
Is that a, forgive me, what day of the week is that?
Thursday.
That's a Thursday? So you're looking for changing our schedule to close Thursday?
Yes.
That's a request? Any thoughts, Board? What are your wishes?
I'd, I'd kind of like to see possibly till noon, but that's just my thoughts, so. David, I just...
All right. So I'm asking for a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve the change to have the Thursday, the 24th of December off? Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any other comments on that?
So this is both for day after Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve?
We already have that. We already have that in the handbook as off.
Okay. All right, so we just need to approve the 24th.
Right.
Okay.
And that is a state as well, isn't it?
The state is closed that day.
Any other questions on it?
No.
Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No. Motion passes three to two.
We need to do advertising for budget supplements in three, or four different departments. We've got judicial, juvenile, will tax, and then contribution and donations. We want to do the hearing on November 24th at 9:05.
Okay, you've heard the request. Is there a motion to set the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on the motion? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Then we've got contingency transfers. Do you want me to do them one by one or just bulk them?
Request, Board?
Bulk.
Bulk. I think you have bulk.
Okay, so we need to do a transfer to the insurance fund 101-4167-421 in the amount of $10,000. There was additional general liability insurance audit that was completed. Lincoln County was charged $17,831.33, typically $9,000-ish dollars for the audit. The increased amount is causing the budget to be, or the, yeah, the budget to be closed. Coroner 101-4213-42252 in the amount of $50,000. Currently, with the payments that we're doing today, the coroner's budget is going to be 20 over, $20,599 over. It looks like there's been an increase in the number of autopsies. Then we need a contingency transfer to 24/7 for $25,000. There was a deputy transferred from the sheriff's department and then he took health insurance, so we're going to divide the $25,000 over the salary, 248-4212-411. Retirement fund, or 248-4212-413, and the group health insurance, 248-4212-415. And then contingency transfer to VSO in the amount of $8,000. The employee took health insurance that was not budgeted for.
All right, you've heard it all. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Last but not least, we need to do the transfer for budgeted cash to the following departments. We need 1.5 million in the highway department and 50,000 in the transfer station. After the claims and whatnot for the transfer station, we have $18,000, $18,556.98 in claims right now. There is $20,000 currently in their cash line, so that would cover that. There's also going to be some cleanup at the end of the year for vendors that have given us donation, or not donations, but paid tipping fees ahead of time. That will probably have to revert back. And whatever money's not used, then I imagine will go back into the general fund. And then the 1.5 is just, currently, Rhodes and Bridge has $563,000 in it. The 1.5 is budgeted. It's just to work on his, or to keep his cash built up.
Very good. You've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. John?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Metamonitor. Toby, you have something to present that Wink has been working on a little bit?
Good morning again. So this item before you, the commission chairman requested staff to talk to Wink and request if there's the process to be to take a look at the T site for detention feasibility. So I attached to the public share file, two documents, the first being the original analysis of the site, and then if that memo really directed us to request a feasibility study to be do the next step. And so the commission chairman requested that staff do that. So we've solicited from Wink Engineering proposal to do, it's a scope of work, to do a feasibility study of the T site for detention feasibility. It's just, it's right around $30,000, so I think about $27,700. In addition, that staff has been in contact with state officials and with SECOG staff, and there is a potential funding source for this feasibility study. So at this time, if you're so desirous as a group, we'd like to work with SECOG staff to submit an application to the state, which will then be forwarded on to the national level, that would provide potentially up to 85% of the funding for this study. I guess that's kind of the background on it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for us at this time.
Thank you, Toby. Any questions for Toby at this time? Timeline on this grant, they need to be applied by certain dates or anything, Toby?
Yes, so the application deadline would be December 19th. I have been in contact with SECOG staff. There might be a more formal resolution that we'll present to the board, but at this time, just really direction from the full group to proceed with trying to obtain some funding to complete this feasibility study.
Very good, Toby. I'm looking for authorization for Toby to proceed with SECOG to see if we qualify for the funding reimbursement for this project. Is there any questions on that? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second, but I'd like to discuss something.
Absolutely.
This is just, Mr. Chairman, this is just for money for a study, correct?
Correct. There's funding out there, there's a deadline coming, and if we want to apply for it...
Whether we move forward or not.
This doesn't, no, this is, that's a different motion.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Is there, so we have a motion, a second. Any other questions on that? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, I think we're ahead of schedule because we have just two things left, right, Toby? Or, sorry.
That's right.
Yes, we have the opening of sealed bids.
Where is that? What time are they? 10:05? So we'll take a 15-minute recess to 10:05. Thank you all.
Sealed bids for the surplus vehicles is at 10:05?
Yep, all right, let's do that. So how many bids or offers or envelopes do we have there, Sean?
We have two envelopes.
You want to open them for us, please?
I am doing so. Jeez.
I know, I know. Well, no, that's fine. I, yes, I wish we could have took more time on February 18th. We could have just waited, but I know you didn't want to wait, so.
Okay, the first envelope?
Yeah.
Has three bids in it. One for each of the vehicles. The 2014 Dodge Charger, the bid is $1,368. The 2015 Dodge Charger, $1,568. The 2016 Dodge Charger for $2,168. And, um, that bid, by the way, was from Youssef DeBog from Island Lake, Illinois.
Okay, is there another?
Those three bids. There's another envelope. I'm trying to sort out what he's asking for. So it looks like this is for the 2016 Dodge Charger for $2,500 and the 2015 for $2,500. So the high bid for the 2015 and 2016 would be the latter, which is Paul Iverson, and the only bid for the 2014 was Youssef DeBog at $1,368.
Is there a motion to accept the high bid on those three vehicles? One being from the gentleman from Illinois and the other one being Mr. Iverson.
I, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Gillespie.
Any questions on that? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Sherry, is there any chance you could call Terry? I'd like to chat with him before I leave today and with the board, please.
Let me tidy these checks here before I move on.
Oh, thank you.
Now we're on recess till 10:15?
Is it that long?
It is.
Yep, we're in recess.
Okay, okay. I was going to ask Sean a question.
We have sealed bids for tax-deed property legally described as Sioux Falls Candlelight Acres II addition, Lot 4A, Block 9, Lincoln County, South Dakota, also known as parcel number 280.88.09.04A. From Nathan Israel Hall for $5,000. $2,188 by Commissioners Jim Schmidt, Tiffany Landine, and Assessor Ethan Piskey.
Is there a motion to accept the bid?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. No questions, I assume, on that? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Given there's no other official business of the county, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, go ahead, Tiffany.
Commissioner Landine at the second. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.